Let's call the noon meeting of the Edgecombe County Commissioners to order. Mr. Peters, would you please give the safety instructions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call and express my best apologies if you can, if you give us our safety instructions.
To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, please listen to the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, please exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right, and then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by the exit sign. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Bramble Street, the street that runs beside our building, to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway where we will remain until it is safe to exit. In the event of an active shooter in the building, we will run if there is an accessible skate path and try to evacuate the premises. If you can't evacuate, find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found and lock any door that you can. And as a last resort, and only for life of imminent danger, fight. Our staff will provide additional assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
God be your thanks for this day, for life, health, and strength. Bless our minds that we might think about the people that we serve and serve within earnest spirit of Christ our Lord and Savior.
If the public hearing is called to order, please cease and come in front of the
I don't even miss that one, do I?
You've got the minutes of your previous meeting, and you'll add additional corrections. Any additional corrections? Any non-admitted approved, asked corrected? Questions? All in favor, that means nobody but one side, aye? All opposed? Any non-admitted approved, asked corrected? Now, to the public. If the public hearing is called to order, please cease and come in front of the Down East Consortium Annual Action Plan. The public lead is called to order. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public minutes?
Yes, sir. In accordance with federal regulations of twenty four CFR Part ninety-one, the City of Rocky Mountain and the Down East Consortium Consortium has prepared a consolidated plan for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, community development program. The consolidated plan covers a three-year period from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. As part of the consolidated plan process, an annual action plan for furthering year, D Y twenty-two, excuse me, has also been prepared, which outlines how to see any chance to expand, and estimate it five hundred and six, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in federal community development block rents on C E B G, and four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars in home investment partnership program funds. A draft is proposed annual action plan will be made available for public review and comment for thirty days, beginning May tenth, twenty twenty-two, and ending on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Copies of the draft document will be available for review at the following locations during regular business hours. Planning and development department is campaigning this Friday, building to One San Andrew Street, harbor North Carolina, two seven eight eight six. Public hearings at the same address Monday, noon, six to seven P M in the commission room on the second floor. And the Department of Community Development, Frederick, Attorney's Municipal Building, three thirty-one South Franklin Street, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, two seven eight eight four, with a public hearing at that same address, Monday, noon, thirteenth, at seven P M in the City Council Chamber on the third floor. In addition, the draft document can be reviewed online at W W W dot Rocky Mountain C dot gov. Public hearings on the proposed annual action plan will also be held. Information regarding the date, time, and location are above. Please be sure to check out the websites for each department for updates. Written comments are encouraged and should be received at the following location no later than June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, by twelve noon to be considered. This is Camilla McGee, interim director of community development, three thirty-one South Franklin Street, P O Box eleven eighty, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, two seven eight eight A O two. It is anticipated that the City Council of the City of Rocky Mountain will take up the proposed annual action plan at a regular meeting on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. The city will submit the twenty twenty-two annual action plan to order on before June thirty of twenty twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite Ms. Camelia McGee, who is the Director of Community Development, for the City of Rocky Mountain, to come forward to give an overview of the annual action plan update.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me. I have the opportunity to stand before you today to speak with you in regards to the twenty twenty-two annual action plan. So the Down East Home Consortium twenty twenty-two annual action plan public hearing. Each year, the Down East Home Consortium receives home investment partnership funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants are non-entitlement funds, meaning a formulation used to award the funding is based on community size, demographics, and housing characteristics. For this upcoming fiscal year, we will be awarded four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. In the public notice that the gentleman just read before you, the notice referenced the estimated amount that was actually received this current fiscal year. At that time, HUD had not released the award amount. We have received that notification, and the new award amount for this upcoming fiscal year will be four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. The home-eligible activities that these funds can be used towards include housing rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, new construction of affordable housing, and tenant-based rental assistance. The twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-two annual action plan, HUD grant recipients like the consortium receive on an annual basis have to submit an annual action plan. In accordance with the consolidated plan, our consolidated plan is a three-year plan that goes from fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. And so the annual action plan for twenty twenty-two is year two of the implementation of the consolidated plan, of the three-year consolidated plan. The annual action plan summarizes the actions, the activities, and federal and non-federal sources that will be used to address housing, as well as community development goals and priorities identified in the three-year consolidated plan from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. Rocky Mountain, as you know, serves as the lead entity for the Down East Home Consortium. The consortium is comprised of nine jurisdictions within Nash and Edgecombe County. The Down East Home Consortium will allot funding to the following activities based on the twenty twenty-two annual action, excuse me, the annual allocation of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. As you can see here in front of you, the chart outlines the project name, as well as the amount, amount, approve amount for this current fiscal year that we're currently in, as well as the proposed amount. As you can see, in this current fiscal year, we were awarded four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. This next upcoming year for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we will be awarded four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. So we're seeing an increase in home funding here. Ten percent is set aside for program administration. Rocky Mountain is actually still reserving their funds due to the reconciliation agreement that your board of commissioners signed back in last year, in October, November, late last year, signed. And so those funds, we are reserving here again this year so that we can be finished with the payout of the reconciliation with both Edgecombe County as well as Nash County. There is a fifteen percent set aside for community housing development organization, which is our CHODO, our certified CHODO here in the county, is Southeastern North Carolina Community Development Corporation. And then fifteen percent, as you can see here, is set aside for Edgecombe County. A little bit less than one point seven percent for Canita, Hines Topps, two, a little over two percent, Princeville, two point seven eight percent. And right now, we are projecting or estimating we'll do scatter site rehabs with that funding. So this year, we will, a little over ninety-one thousand dollars would be set aside for this upcoming year for Edgecombe County and the participating jurisdictions that are referenced. Also, you have in the last row, other participating jurisdictions, and they include Shoxburg with four percent, Spring Hope, one point eight one percent, Middlesex, one point two nine percent, and Whittakers, one point two, twenty-two percent. And that's a little bit over thirty-seven thousand dollars. So the public comment period is actually at least thirty days. So the notice, public notice went out on May tenth. It will run through June thirtieth, so it's a little over thirty days. We anticipate sending, submitting the plan to HUD by June thirtieth. There will be another public hearing on June thirteenth during the Rocky Mountain City Council meeting at seven P M on next Monday. And then, any additional comments or that are done between now and then, we would anticipate incorporating those comments into our annual action plan. That concludes the presentation. I don't know if you may have any questions for me, but I'll be glad to answer if you did.
Any questions for this, from the board?
Yes, sir. Can you tell me how many people or families you were able to help in twenty, with twenty twenty-one funds?
So with the twenty twenty-one funds, we were able to assist four residents here in the county with this current fiscal year of funding. With the money that's being set aside for the reconciliation for Edgecombe County, which is a little over four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we are anticipating being able to assist at least twelve households. We may be able to assist a couple of more households, but that's going to depend on the bids. Right now, we're anticipating that those bid amounts would be up to fifty thousand dollars. And so that's how we're basing the allocation of roughly about twelve homes at this point. And depending upon the condition of those homes and the bids, we may be able to do a couple of addition of homes. But right now, it's definitely going to be able to assist twelve households within the county.
These are grants, not loans.
Keep in mind that the home program is a deferrable, forgivable loan. It means that there is a period of affordability. The period of affordability for ten years or less is ten percent each year. It's forgiven over a ten-year period. If the loan amount is forty thousand to fifty thousand, then there's a fifteen-year period of affordability. So yes, it is a loan. It is a forgivable loan. As long as they remain in the home, then the home each year, ten percent will be forgiven. If for some reason, if the person would pass away, then one of the things that we try to do is to make sure that that homeowner has kind of had some time to think about before expiring, who they would like for the home to be passed along to. That person or individual, though, would have to meet the qualifications of being low to moderate income. So an immediate family member that's low to moderate income could assume that loan. And it's, and then what would happen is, then we would collect that information, that homeowner's residence information, and then there would also, we would have to include them also as part of the deed of trust. So they would have, have to have one ownership of the property. And then they would have to meet the program guidelines. If for some reason, they don't meet the program guidelines, and the homeowner or the homeowner's heirs or family members decide to continue to want to keep the home, then we have to determine how long they actually, like say, for instance, if the loan was for ten years, and maybe the homeowner lived in the home for five years, and then they passed away. So then fifty percent of that loan would then be back durable. So what would then have to happen, because we're not in the business of wanting to, um, in the real estate business. So we want to work with that family to see what we can do to make sure that they continue to keep that home. That's the overall goal. So one of the things that we have to make sure we're doing is, because these are federal funds that we receive, so we're required to assist the family that's low to moderate income. So that's our first goal, is to make sure that that person who occupies that dwelling as their primary residence is low to moderate income.
Is this told on the front end when people first apply, not during the middle of the conversation?
It should be told on the front end. And so now, keep in mind, a lot of times, when people are trying to get assistance, sometimes they hear the information, and sometimes they don't. But one of the things that we do before they sign an agreement, we share with them the agreement in advance, so that they can review it with their family. We also ask that they bring a family member with them, so that the family can also understand what they're signing. And then they have a three-day right to cancel.
Oh, question, sorry. How does, how are we getting this information out to citizens?
So we're working with the director here of planning office, Ms. Katina Brasswell, for Edgecombe County. We have monthly consortia meetings, and so we meet with the various non-jurisdictions in a big group meeting. We're also meeting monthly with Ms. Brasswell and the county manager. I believe it's the third Wednesday, or Thursday of the month, we meet monthly. So we're going around visiting with the various jurisdictions individually, particularly Edgecombe County, Nash County, town of Shoxburg, and we're in the process of also meeting with Tarver.
But that doesn't tell me how my citizens are finding out about it.
They're finding out through its advertised in the paper.
That's why I'm going to find out.
Yes. It's also shared here at this office, in, in the, in the planning office. And then one of the things that Ms. Brasswell does is to make sure that it's disseminated to those various participating jurisdictions, like Princeville, Hines Topps, Canita. To all of the jurisdictions that are here in Edgecombe County, Ms. Brasswell assists us with that. We're also working right now with the town of Canita with getting the information re-advertised so that more residents would have an opportunity to participate and apply.
And that was the reason I was asking, because a lot of live districts, they don't get a newspaper anymore, they can't afford it. It was like, what other avenues are we using to make sure that this information gets into the right hands besides just the newspaper?
Right. And so we're, we actually share with the local jurisdictions. And so we're hoping that those local jurisdictions also make it available at their town hall meetings, doing some door-to-door canvassing, maybe. But we kind of, Rocky Mountain as the lead entity, provides the information to those jurisdictions. And they were hoping that those jurisdictions are helping us with giving the information more disseminated, because they know the residents in their community.
Also during the application period, we shared, we posted on our website, on social media, also with Brasswell in their office, they get calls all the time where people want to apply to programs like this. So when we don't have an open application period, they keep a list of names and addresses, so that when we do start taking applications, they'll mail one directly to those that have access.
Mr. McGee, maybe, Mr. Evans, in regards to what I see in print here, it says, you know, I'm gracious for Hines Topps, for Canita, and Princeville, but complaining about Macklesfield, complaining about Leggett, complaining about Speed. Can you, Ms. McGee, can you, is there a rationale, I'm sure there is, why am I just seeing the jurisdictions of Hines Topps, Canita, Princeville? Because some, nobody has applied, whatever.
No. So what you see before you are the jurisdictions that are a part of the consortium.
Okay.
Macklesfield, or Speed, or Leggett are not a part of the consortium. However, Edgecombe County can also assist residents in other areas and jurisdictions in the county and in incorporated areas. And I don't know if Mr. Evans would like to add to that, but, um...
So they, each jurisdiction has to choose to be a part of the consortium, and those have chosen not to. But when we take applications, or the county has a whole, we will see applications from those, those towns, we will, they'll be presented.
Okay. So, thank you.
And that's what I do. I take it to church, because my folks out in Leggett, they every, but why would someone not want to be a part of the consortium? Do it cost for something?
There are no costs.
A lot of paperwork, a small town like Leggett.
We handle it all, between us and City of Rocky Mountain, we handle it all, so.
We can reach back out to those groups and see if they have a willingness to become a part of the consortium. Would you agree with that?
Yes, sir. And then also keep in mind that the formula allocation that HUD shares with us that we have to implement or administer here is based on the population size, as well as the demographics of that community or area. So a smaller community, and I think you may have seen that course with Canita, a percentage. So as, the smaller the jurisdiction is, then the allocation is going to be smaller. So if we look at it as a whole picture, for instance, the town of Canita's allocation is, um...
Point one.
Point one. And that's equivalent to about eight hundred and some odd dollars over here. So it's, it's, it is something to help with assisting with addressing housing needs. But when we look at it from a whole picture, um, Mr. Evans, the county can use some of their funds to possibly help some of those jurisdictions.
Some of their fifteen percent arrive.
Correct, because that's a larger amount. Not saying that eight hundred dollars is not, but I'm just trying to kind of make sure you see the picture as to the allocation, how, how, um, capital they'd be. And it's something that the federal government sends out, that allocation to us.
You know, questions or comments?
Thank you. I didn't think it was going to sound like loaded comments. I'm just gracious for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have citizens who couldn't be here to ask me, to ask some questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I would like to adjourn the public hearing. The recommendation is to approve the plan as presented. Does anybody get like, um, any further comments? If you adjourn, at this time, I would like to consideration of approval of the plan as presented, or the recommendation is to approve, as recommended. Motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions? All in favor, that means nobody but one side, aye? All opposed? Any non-admitted? Next, on the general, a public hearing is called to order, please cease and come in front of the proposed fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, Edgecombe County. The public hearing is called to order. Mr. Peters, would you please read public comments?
Yes, sir. Notice is here, I get an that the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing on Monday, June sixth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M for the purpose of receiving citizen comments, reviews on the proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget. Citizens interested in reviewing the proposed budget may do so by visiting the Edgecombe County website at W W W dot Edgecombe County N C dot gov. Citizens who wish to address the board on this matter may do so at the meeting during the public hearing. Citizens may also submit their comments through email to the publiccomments@edgecomec.com, or by mail to Frangie Mungo, Court Bureau Board, P O Box in Tarver, North Carolina, two seven eight eight six. All written comments received by five three one two six will be read at the meeting, Frangie Mungo, Court Bureau Board.
What's that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If you'll allow me, I'll read through my budget message for the benefit of the public here tonight. Submitted here is the Edgecombe County recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-three. The budget is balanced in its entirety as required by the North Carolina Local Government Budget Physical Control Act. We have approached preparation of this budget with the following goals in mind. Balancing the budget without a tax increase. Making exports possible without compromising operations and services. Addressing critical capital needs. Addressing critical needs of key outside agencies as much as possible, and providing a reasonable cost of living increase. The proposed F L R tax rate for F Y twenty-three is ninety-five cents per one hundred dollars in value, which is no change from the current year. One cent generates approximately three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The county's proposed budget for F Y twenty-three totals seventy-seven million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars, including our enterprise funds, which are utilities, public utilities, water, and sewer in solid waste. The proposed budget is a decrease of two million, seventy-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-four, one hundred and fifty dollars, or two point six percent from the original budget of the current year. The proposed budget includes a fund balance appropriation of four million, eight hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars from general fund. The current year's original fund balance appropriation was four million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-five. The state requires that we maintain an amount equal to at least eight percent of our general fund expenditures in unassigned fund balance. The proposed general fund budget is sixty-nine million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, eight percent of which is five million, five ninety-eight, nine fifty-three. The proposed budget fund balance appropriation to balance F Y twenty-three budget does not take us below that requirement. I'll cover some key highlights. First, on revenue. So far this year, our tax collection rate is ninety-five point one percent. Thanks to the hard work of our tax administrator and her staff, we ended F Y twenty-one with a collection rate of ninety-six point two percent, which is the highest we've had in at least the last twenty years. Our property tax revenue projections are based on a total valuation of three billion, four hundred and twenty-nine million, eight hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, including all real property, personal property, public utilities, and motor vehicles. This is an increase of one million, six hundred thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars in value from last year. The devastating fire at Q B C did put a dent of just under one million dollars in our potential tax revenues for next year. The total tax value of the facility before the fire was one hundred and twenty-four million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and six dollars. Now the total value is twenty-two million, six hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and six dollars. It declined in value of one hundred and one million, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars, or eighty-two percent. Our sales tax revenues are holding steady compared to the last two years, and much higher than our revenues in F Y nineteen and prior. I do project that the current year's sales tax collection will fall just under last year's. I'm still conservatively budgeting projected revenues for sales tax in F Y twenty-three. A cost of living adjustment of two percent is included in this budget at a cost of approximately three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. I'm pleased to share that we will not have an increase in our health insurance payments for next year, being that we have done well in the last few years with insurance cost of budget. I'm not including an increase in the health insurance as I did in the last two years. I do want to pause here and note that from our conversation at your budget work session, you did ask me to go back and look at the budget to see if we are able to do more than the two percent, perhaps a four percent at least, maybe five. And so we're, we're doing that review now. As you know, we're, I'm going to be asking you to not vote on this budget tonight, but to vote at a second meeting later this month. And so we'll continue to look at that and to see if we're able, we'll be able to do more than the two percent. The health plan will continue to include a health savings account, or H S A, option that includes a seven hundred and fifty dollar contribution by the county. We will also continue to provide health screenings for all individuals covered by our plan. Individuals who choose not to participate in the screening will pay fifty dollars per month towards the cost of their insurance, as it has been in the past. In addition to medical, dental, and life insurance, employees have a number of half-chair plans to select from. We will also continue to offer the Health Met R X program for staff of chronic diseases who choose to participate. The Employee Assistance Program, or E A P, which offers counseling and other work-life services through both telephoning and face-to-face sessions. and a wellness incentive of two hundred and fifty thou, two hundred and fifty dollars for those needing the waist circumference standards and making or making five percent improvement in weight for weeks. In order to reduce the amount of fund balance appropriated, we are including a vacancy allowance in our budget. Though not used by us before, this is a common budgeting practice. It allows us to leave all current positions budgeted while factoring in our expected lapse salaries due to turnover. We have spread two point five million dollars, uh, in vacancy allowance over our largest departments. We do need to keep in mind that we will not be able to move money from those salary lines by way of budget amendments throughout the year. We will monitor that closely. As you will recall, we increased our minimum salaries to a ten dollar per hour minimum a few years ago. However, at the time, we did not do the same for part-time staff. I recommend that we have included in the draft budget the additional ninety thousand dollars we estimate it will cost to raise salaries to a minimum of ten dollars per part-time staff. This primarily affects the third-six-site tenants that work in solid waste. This also factors in a tiered approach so that there is some separation based on years of service. Regarding capital outlet, this budget includes a capital, capital outlet expenditures for county operations of one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, which is a two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollar increase from this year's original capital outlet budget. Of this, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars is for projects that will not be completed or delivered in the current year and rolled forward. A tax is a detailed list of proposed capital expenditures. Capital funding includes one hundred and ninety-eight thousand for equipment, three hundred and seven thousand for vehicles, one hundred and seventy-five thousand for EMS vehicles, one hundred, uh, excuse me, four hundred and sixty-five thousand for buildings and grounds, and also fifty thousand dollars set aside for animal shelter reserve. And that's the total of the one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Though it is included in debt, it is included in debt service, I do want to point out that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is budgeted for both the final payment on the loan for the shared vehicles purchased in two thousand nineteen, as well as the first payment on new loans to purchase approximately fifteen vehicles for the sheriff's office. The cost to operate landfill continues to exceed the revenues generated. Without a typical increase, we are projecting a need to transfer, um, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to solid waste. I recommend to increase tipping fees from sixty-one dollars and fifty cent to sixty-five dollars for municipal solid waste, and from forty-six dollars to fifty dollars, um, per one thou, per ton, excuse me, for construction and demolition. That will help to close the gap by about one hundred thousand dollars. This will put us among the highest in our region with the exception of the City of Rock and Mount, which is at sixty-six dollars for municipal solid waste. Though we are very lean on our operations, we will continue to look for ways to cut costs. We have been notified at least th, of a, at least a three and a half percent increase from the town's harbor and a possible increase from the City of Rock and Mount. We believe our current rates are sufficient for water and sewer to cover this increase and therefore recommend no change at this time. However, if the increases are more than expected, I will reconsider my recommendation. The total requested by outside agencies is sixteen million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, which is two million, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars above what is allocated this year. We received a request from two new outside agencies this year. However, with our own budget constraints, I do not recommend funding any new agencies this coming fiscal year. The total I recommend for outside agency funding is fourteen million, four hundred and six thousand, thirty-eight dollars. This is an increase of one hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for outside agencies. My recommendation is that most of the agencies receive no increase from the current year's budget. The changes I do propose are based on ongoing agreements, formula calculations, and statutory requirements. Three volunteer fire departments are requesting an increase in their fire tax. They are heart seeds proposing to go from eight cent to twelve cent, Leggett from eight and a half to nine cent, and Fountain from eight and a half to nine cent. I recommend that we call for separate public hearings for citizens in those districts to have the opportunity to make their opinions known before acting on these increases. As you know, Edgecombe, uh, has been allocated nine million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars in federal ARCA funds or American Rescue, uh, America Rescue Plan Act, after which we have already received. The program permits counties to take a standard allowance of up to ten million dollars as revenue replacement, which we have elected. This will allow greater flexibility of the use of the funds. In my proposed ARCA budget, we can strategically use funds to give some much-needed relief to our general fund, satisfy upcoming economic development obligations, address big-ticket critical capital needs, provide a one-time and much-deserved bonus for our employees, and provide some direct assistance to our citizens. In conclusion, we will continue to monitor the budget closely throughout the year. Save where we can and spend all where necessary. I appreciate the hard work of all our staff who are involved in this long process. And I thank the budget committee for your guidance and time invested. I respectfully submit this proposed budget for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, again, I, I do ask that you hold this for adoption at a second meeting, which I recommend that you hold on June twenty-seventh. I also want to note that I will ask you to take action tonight on what I just described as the, uh, proposed use of our ARCA funds. So I, I'll let you call for your public hearing first if you want to.
At this time, uh, a call for public comments. If anybody here would like to speak on the budget, please come forward and say something, and I just want the public record. And if I just speak at the public comments. And if none, uh, the recommendation is not adopted.
That's correct, yes, sir.
It is to watch the call of public hearing now.
Yes, sir.
Should we call the public hearing?
I have that later. Yes, sir.
At this time, it's all information. Any other comments?
Uh, I, I do, sir, before you move on from that, I would ask you to, um, to take action tonight to approve the planned use of our federal ARCA funds. Um, we have reviewed this list for the benefit of the public, I'll walk through this. And so, as I just mentioned, the county has received just under ten million dollars from the, from U S Treasury for this COVID relief program, America Rescue Plan Act, or ARCA. Um, the program is allowing counties and towns, and all counties and towns are receiving this money, to take what they call a standard allowance. That is, we can count up to ten million dollars as revenue replacement, whereas there's the understanding that the pandemic had an impact on our economy and therefore had an impact on counties and towns and their revenue generation. Not only just their collection of revenues, but the potential growth of their revenue streams. And so, being that we receive just under ten million dollars, we can designate all of our allocation under that category of revenue replacement. At your budget work session, I walked through a list of items that I would recommend and plan to designate the use of these funds. Now, if, if we're taking the standard allowance of our entire amount, basically what that allows us to do is then to, uh, basically transfer that into general fund, to use that to replace funds within the general fund. And then the equivalent of that amount, we can spend that on anything that county otherwise can spend money on. Um, and so, the things that I had shared with you and I want to just run through real, real quickly tonight, um, some broad categories we've listed, first is economic development. So part of that will be used, one million, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and hun, one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars to satisfy an upcoming obligation that you, I know that you're aware that we have for land that we purchased at Kingsbury. Secondly, two million, six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to satisfy a second upcoming obligation that will be due this coming, uh, spring. Uh, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to reimburse Caroline's gaming partnership for site work that has been completed on our end at Kingsbury Industrial Park. Also, uh, earmarking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for other site work needed, uh, general maintenance upkeep at Kingsbury, specifically. Next, under, uh, broad category of infrastructure, um, we're proposing that one million dollars of these funds be set aside and earmarked for, uh, the, uh, for broadband deployment in the county. As you know, and I think a couple of meetings ago, you approved, um, su, uh, supporting successful applicant from, uh, at least four companies that are looking at expanding broadband in the county. Um, you don't necessarily have to designate all of that to whichever, uh, that is successful with their state grant application through the great grant program, but this will allow you to strategically invest in the help with expansion of broadband in the county. Uh, under the public health category, um, we're recommending twenty-five thousand dollars to be earmarked for support services for our senior citizens through our Office of Aging. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for HVAC replacement, this, uh, strategic replacement of, uh, units in our county buildings. Uh, to use one million dollars to, um, to supplement or to support payroll and, and public health categories that will, as I mentioned before, that will give us some, uh, a little bit of relief in how much fund balance we had to appropriate this year. Also fifty thousand dollars for additional protective measures related to COVID. Um, under what they refer to as premium pay category, one million dollars, as I mentioned a moment ago, recommending that, uh, we use that to pay hazard pay bonuses, uh, to our staff. Under economic impact, using two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to supplement our crisis intervention program in our Department of Social Services, a hundred thousand dollars for urgent home renovations, and then, um, some additional, uh, C I P. purchases, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a new level at the landfill, and seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars for roof replacement at the detention center. So you'll see that all of that adds up to our total allotment, which is nine million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. So the action that I'm recommending that you take tonight is that, that you're approving, uh, as you're using the standard allowance for ARCA as revenue replacement, that we allow these funds to replace general funds, uh, in the amount here, and that they be used, that those replaced funds be used for the purposes listed, um, in your packet that I just read.
Go ahead, no more questions. My board. Okay, um, consider, uh, anybody to make the motion as stated by the manager, if you have.
Thanks.
So you've got the motion. Mr. Martin, will you? Okay. The motion as made, as, as stated by the manager, is made. Questions? All of them, people, let me know when the votes are, aye, aye, opposed, and if none. Schedule of appointments?
Please go ahead, did you have a time for that, June twenty-seventh?
Uh, it's our regular time, second call. Uh, so for scheduled appointments, we have Mr. Larry Peters. So, uh, as, as you know, Larry Peters is, uh, lead for North Carolina interns, been working with us for almost a year now. Uh, one of the things he's been working on is community voice, and part of the community voice is we were able to do our very first Citizens Academy. And so they have completed, uh, their sessions, and, uh, Larry is going to, uh, recognize our participants.
So with these four, I go ahead and, uh, recognize the votes, uh, that participated in the Citizens Academy. I just want to thank the board for, uh, giving the opportunity to recognize them. Um, I think the Citizens Academy was a great opportunity to really, you know, connect with our citizens. Um, I think it's really commendable to those who signed up to be a part of our personal work. So with that in mind, I wanted to recognize those who participated. Up first, Kathy Williams. Gloria Mosley. And also getting a Citizens Academy t-shirt as well.
Congratulations.
Next up, Eugenia Lee. Next up, Katia Peters. Congratulations. I thought you both might have a little better, if you think of that. And Khadija Peters. Congratulations. Teresa Stokes. Dr. Boyer Knight, she's not here tonight?
But, Glenn.
Glenn Knight, yeah, Dr. Glenn Knight, sorry about that. And last but not least, Crystal Wines, Wells Anderson.
Congratulations.
I'd like if we, be okay for them to come up and stand behind us, please.
Please, please, all of you come up. Just on behalf of the world, we'd like to congratulate all of you. You all probably know more about this government now than we do.
If I would stand behind.
Yes, yes, very good. Are, are they good? Can you see all of them? You do, Mr. Martin, together, man?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And a comment from the board?
When would our Nick finish?
We haven't scheduled it. We're looking at.
Where is he?
He is, yes. But he did, he certainly has created the curriculum for this, it'll make very good for us to continue offering it. And Mr. Peters will be back before you, but under manager's report, they give you overall a date on community board.
Next.
Uh, next, I'd like to invite Mr. Michelle Effert, the Health Director, to come and give you your monthly show presentation.
Good evening. Good night, everyone. I'm getting tired of this report.
We'll let you know when.
Well, I wish that I could say that we were going to stay all day, but now we're starting to fight back up a little bit, so, you know, and I can't, I probably want to say, and hopefully I'll come and talk to you about something else, but things we all on the horizon. I don't want to come to the horizon like the monkeypox, so let's not talk it up, but, um, so. So we'll just stick with COVID for now and hope it can go back down. Um, so unfortunately, we have started to see an increase, uh, over the last four weeks. Um, we've been, our average, daily average of COVID has started to creep back up. Um, and you can see on the report, we went, um, from the week of May second to averaging four new positives a day, to the week of May twenty-third, to averaging fifteen positives a day. Um, remember, a couple of months back, uh, when they started, the state started to send out the home tests, there's other, you know, we don't know the results of that, those are not required to be reported to the health department. So these are what we know that has been, you know, that are lab-confirmed tests that have been reported to us, okay? Um, so, and you remember, I think it was last meeting, the state went and changed the guidelines on how they count a COVID death. And so we were at a hundred and forty, and then they went in and changed the, the, the standard, and then we're at a hundred and fifty-three. Um, unfortunately, we do not have all that information, so we were giving you the raw data of the deaths, and now we're having to go by what the state says on the COVID dashboard. So now when you look at the, this data, you're going to see this. So now, when you look at this data, you're going to see this suppressed group. And so when you have a small number of groups, they say that it's easier to identify. And so now they collectively put them all into one group, so they cannot be identified. So unfortunately, we do have a hundred and fifty-three deaths, thirteen were added by the state that we did not have, they did not tell us who they are. Exactly, so, but I'm sorry to report that. The good thing is we haven't had any new deaths, fortunately. And the report that Thomas had sent out, the email that went out, our hospitalizations are down, so that's good. Hopefully we can continue to trend down to zero. Looking at our COVID vaccinations, we still are providing vaccinations on Fridays at Rockmount and Tarboro from nine a.m. to four p.m. Even when they came out with the second booster, we thought we'd have a bigger uptick in numbers, and we have not. But part of that is too, there's a lot of places that you can get a vaccination now. So we are glad to share that topic with people in the county. But we have not seen a major increase in that. And you can see that in our percentages, at least one dose, we're still at fifty-five percent. Two doses, we're at fifty-one percent, we've stayed that way for a few months now. And looking at how many have received one booster, we're at twenty-five percent. And so now, it is recommended that children age five to eleven years old get a booster shot. So we are in the preparation of getting our supply ready for that. And we will take appointments on Fridays for that age group as well to receive the booster. If any parent wants their child to have a booster. And if you'll notice, it's only for Pfizer, that's doing the age five to eleven for a booster. It's now recommended also that children age twelve and up who are immunocompromised, that they get a second booster now. So those are the new changes. You may have heard a little bit of talk, co-talk a little while back about age six months or four years old, and then they put it on hold. So they've now sent us an email that state is anticipating by the end of this month that that will be approved. And so when that happens, we will operate because a lot of pediatrician offices are not providing immunizations for that group. And that is important.
Question. With all that update and we said update, your office is not recommending that people go back to wearing masks in closed areas or are you optional?
So for healthcare facilities, even when it went to optional, we're still required to. So if on the sixth floor, you come to the health department, you have, you have to wear masks. In any type of closed area, which we, our staff still is not, you know, meeting in big groups. So anytime that we do have rooms together, we do masks. And definitely, any healthcare facilities go back, we still mask.
So that's a good job. For those that are still, that need to get booster on Fridays from nine to four, is it a point necessary?
We do go by appointments so we can make sure, you know, so if there's a five, they send it to a vials. And so you have so many doses that are in a vials, and we want to anticipate to make sure that we have enough on hand. The state only sends you so much, they stop your numbers, yeah. But you could call that day and, you know, or walk in and say, hey, you know, hey, I want to get my booster, and we'll put you right in, yeah.
Right, if she did, that's in terms of, we'll want to continue to see what have the protection to in this report of the United Day on this special significant fight that we gave to him, that what have the protection for that? Every, every quarter, we can get another part of the report on that, on that, to me, on the staff to, to, to come to the board and report that. But there is a disagreement, there are none of the issues that you want to hide that shit.
Do you have any information at all regarding baby formula, where are we in the county with this?
So, yeah, so, you know, of course, though, through WIC, we have the WIC department, and they're keeping us, you know, up to date on that. And so what they're doing is they, the state has come up with different information to go out to families, giving them options. So, you know, as you know, there's many formulas, very popular formulas that you cannot find. But there are alternatives that are made up just the same way, just a different brand. So this is, I brought an example of something the state's sending out, and this is basically going out to families and saying, hey, if you use this one and you can't find it, here's another option that you can use.
That WIC will pay for.
Well, if you're, if you are a WIC recipient, yes.
That it will pay for, it would pay for it until the state approves, and this is something new that the state will pay for, right?
Yes, some of it they'll pay for, and then I think some of it, depending on which one it is, there may be an expense. But for right now, the state is trying to help in any way they can getting the formula. From what I'm told, Gerber has not really been a problem, you know, we've had some of our WIC participants who couldn't get the formula they're used to using. But when they called their doctors and said, hey, what's an alternative, what else can I use, they've been able to get those alternatives, so.
So I noticed an uptick in cases, but the hospitalizations are still not rising.
That's right, those are staying fairly low.
Those are still staying on. That looks like a COVID thing.
Yeah, a lot of it's still, looking like the Omicron, which the sinus, you know, which is about the years. A lot of people think that they have sinus and sinus infection, so it's, it's still looking like that, yeah. Unfortunately, we're not having any deaths, that shows you that it's not as severe this time, right now.
Another question. Here it is, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we. Number seven on the table. Is there a motion to recess the regular board of commissioners' meeting and reconvene as the board at least six times a year? Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We announce it in as a board of equalization and review, and I'd like to call that meeting.
Good evening. At our last meeting, I informed you that we had one appeal from Tarboro Popco, which is the rest home facility allocated at thirty-two ten, Western Boulevard. We have been trying to reach out to them, and we have been responsive to their request for appeal. So in your paperwork, I left on your desk in front of you. Just an overview for that property is the twenty-twenty-one value, last year was two million, three eighteen zero thirty-four. The new value due to renovations that that facility received this past year, we've increased the value to two million, five eighty-three, four sixty-eight. That is the amount that the customers sent in and appealed for. Appeal's basis for appeal is opinion of value. Taxpayer feels the value is more than fair market value and is not equitably appraised as compared to similar properties. Appraisers staff attempted to contact the company who filed the appeal on the behalf of the taxpayer, which is Ron LLC, and was unsuccessful in obtaining any evidence that the value was assessed un-uniformed or inconsistent with the Edgerton County Schedule value. Staff contends that the value increase was done in accordance with NCGS, G S one oh five, two eighty-seven, A two B, and make a recommendation to accept the value of two million, five eighty-three, four sixty-eight for the tax value located on property thirty-two ten, Western Boulevard.
Is that the form of writ having?
Yes, ma'am.
It's been recommended for appeals, they have not?
They requested appeal, and in your packet, it'll have some paperwork where they emailed us the request. We have sent two separate emails and a U.S. postal mail requesting additional information as to support their reason for appeal and their reason behind the value. There's been no response.
You say anybody get to speak for the Tarboro Pope, Pope, is anybody here?
Not to my knowledge.
And your recommendation is to receive your?
It's to continue with the value that was originally assessed to the taxpayer at two million, five eighty-three, four sixty-eight.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And just for mileage, they will receive a notification that this value was, did go before you guys and did not change, and they'll have an additional opportunity to appeal to property tax commission if they still feel that it's not happening. With that all being said, comes through the resolution to finalize our values for this year. Mr. Peters, do I mean, or we did? Whereas influence with the requirements of NCGS one oh five, two eighty-five, and one oh five, two eighty-seven, all property real and personal subject to taxation in Edgerton County has been listed for adverb and tax purposes as of January one, twenty-twenty-two, and appraised or reappraised by actual appraisal at its true value as money in accordance with the Machine React, nineteen-second, one, as amended, chapter one oh five, General Statute of North Carolina. And whereas the real and personal property appraisal and tax attract have been examined by the county assessor generally to ascertain that the same scale of value have been used in all townships and in the county. And whereas the assessment ratio has been abolished statewide, and appraised value of property must be used as its tax value on all real and personal property subject to taxation in the county as provided in G S one oh five, two eighty-three. And whereas the Edgerton County Board of Equalization Review, after the due notice states required by law duly commenced in its meeting on April fourth, twenty-twenty-two, and after taking and subscribing to the oath required by law, proceeded with the dispatch of its duty. And whereas the said Board of Equalization Review has heard and given due consideration to all complaints and appeals that have come to its attention from the taxpayers who own or control taxable property assessed for taxation in Edgerton County with respect to the valuation of such property or the property of others. And whereas the said Board has examined and reviewed the tax list for each township for the current year, has listed and assessed all real and personal property subject to taxation in the county, which has been amended from said list and brought to its attention, has corrected all errors brought to its attention in names, persons, subject to action to be taken on him and appeals to this board in description of property and assessment valuation of all taxable property appearing on said list. And said Board has increased or decreased or left unchanged the appraisal pre-valuation of them. Now, therefore, the resolve of the Edgerton County Board of Equalization Review that all changes in names, description, or valuations made by said Board shall be reflected upon the tax records of the county by correction, rebate, or additional charge. And in that, when all such changes have been given effect upon the tax records and the scrolls of tax books have been checked, totaled, and balanced, the same shall be and the same are hereby declared to be the permanent tax list and assessment role of Edgerton County for twenty-twenty-two, subject to provisions of chapter one oh five of the General Statute of North Carolina. The second day of May, I cannot change that, this sixth day of June, I believe y'all had the updated one, May twenty-two. And then it will require you have the time.
That will get you approved. Question? All in favor, let me know by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here it is, approved.
Do you need a job?
You got that?
I can get it.
Get it while we can.
It's in a box, you're packing.
Go ahead and sign that. Is there anything else to comment?
No, sir.
Before this word.
Just a job for the year.
Here it is, is the motion to adjourn the board of equalization and review and reconvene the regular board of commissioners. Any questions? All in favor, let me know by voting aye. All opposed? Here it is, we now stand again as a board of commissioners. While we're signing that, this time for public petition. Is there anybody present that would like to address the board on anything that might not necessarily be on that agenda? Is there anybody present?
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Camilla standing at the seat of his seat.
Good evening. Good evening, little fancy, P O Box one three nine one, Pine Top, North Carolina. District address one two seven Midway Lane, Tarboro, North Carolina, two seven eight eight six. First, I want to thank you all for allowing me to sit on the animal control committee. And I'm glad that we have made some progress and announced about the animal shelter. The schools emerged. I have recorded all the meetings and posted them on YouTube for anybody to see. I got a call this evening right before the phone, someone asked me about where was district six, and who was the commissioner? They say they were reading about, I guess, probably that video about comments. And so we were in where, where the area was located. The comments were very interesting at the joint meeting with school boards, I think last week, that was what it was. It was not Edgerton County Commissioners that came to this conclusion, it was Nash County Commissioners. And it appears that this board seems to be punishing themselves, speaking for me. I think you got an upcoming public hearing you're going to schedule. And like I said, on the other meeting, I think you all need to announce where you all stand as a board so people can be more informed and see where we're headed. During those hearings, well, not hearings, but meetings, there was a lot of emphasis put on new schools and all those kinds of things. But like I said, one of them, we need to get to the root cause and find out how it all began, where we're headed. And matter of fact, someone had called me right before the joint meeting because they were concerned where Commissioner Harris stood. And I think she made her comment long and clear. And they also asked about Ms. Powell, and I think her comments, they sort of saw where they were going. But this board, I think, you need to go ahead, and I know you got those coming here. But the people need to be laid, because this is so confusing to some that don't know all that's going on, and just make it plain and clear. So when you do have a public hearing, that people know what all is at stake. And I've been following this board a lot of years, and the school board, a lot of times, in these meetings right by myself. So for anyone that have an issue with me speaking on, not this board, but me, you know, just see me, because I put in the time, put in the work, have it documented. Like I said, I got these documented. For anyone that won't be going to see it, I do this out of pocket. So people like myself that work can see it. So I appreciate you all, and I look forward to you all getting some emergency time, I'm for myself, so.
Any more comments? Anybody else to speak at public? And at this time, moving on to other business.
Mr. Chairman, we have before you budget amendments for your consideration. I would like to point out a key thing on a few of them. If you look at budget amendment number one in your packets, one of these are fines that are collected at the state level, was sent to the county for school. Prior to, we were not required to budget the receipt and expenditure of these funds. But now we've been told that we are to do that, and so this is to create these budget lines and to budget for the amount expected to receive, be received here in this term of this year. And again, these are funds that go to our schools. Budget amendment number, number eight, I want to point out that the, our general crime prevention council funds, we receive funds every year. Sometimes there are additional funds that are received. Sometimes if one agency is not able to spend all of their funds, and that is recalled for the end of this year. We attribute it to other programs that apply for it. So we are receiving additional twenty-six thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Also, you'll see seventeen hundred dollars appropriated. That is for the local management, recall, the county is required to manage it at ten percent, it's usually somewhere around twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. Looking back at the budget, we did not have the correct number in earlier, at the beginning of the year for our budget. And so that is to correct that adding that seventeen hundred dollars for that. And so that is to correct that adding that seventeen hundred dollars for that, um, number to be correct, twenty-four eight oh four for our local management. Let's see, also you have at your place, uh, an additional budget amendment. I'll ask you to consider this one, uh, late-breaking budget amendment after we prepare the package to go out on Friday. This is a fairly routine budget amendment from our solid waste department, moving some funds from employee insurance and distributing those, uh, among some other lines that are, um, somewhat slightly over budgeted. So I, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have more me involved with.
Any questions for the man? Okay, none, that's a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? None, it is approved, thanks.
Item B is regarding approval of right-of-way advantage by the community college. Instant DOT is planning a road widening project on Wilson Street and has approached the community college to purchase a land right-of-way. Uh, the appraisal is completed, it's working, the board of trustees voted to sell the right-of-way. Um, you, you must also approve the package D for the right-of-way. I do recommend that you approve this as presented. As a note, as I understand, that this is a widening project that's going to run from Western Boulevard all the way to the railroad, of course, you're attending to the portion that runs just in front of the community college.
Motion? Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? None, it is approved. None, it is approved.
Item C, um, though there have been three community meetings held and writing out to gather citizen input on a possible county line, school merger, I suggest that the board hold its home public hearing. I recommend that public hearing be called for at your July fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Any votes? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, that public hearing is called.
I do want to point out, you'll note that, um, that July fifth, that is a Tuesday before being a holiday. So our, your meeting in July is going to be on that Tuesday. Um, item D, you do have, we've received requests from three of our fire, three of our fire departments to decrease their fire tax. Uh, in their request, each one has outlined their need or requests. We reviewed these requests and determined justification to be reasonable for the fire protection and response they provide. However, since they will increase the tax to citizens in each of those five, uh, each of those fire districts, I recommend that you call for a public hearing for each district to be held and meaning to be called on June twenty-seventh, um, of this month.
Do you think to public?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to call for a public hearing for negative? On June twenty-seventh? Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, it is approved. Is there a motion to call for a hard seat? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none. Is there a motion to call for a public hearing for the South West? Next. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, public hearing still called. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, item D, uh, it's my responsibility to annually review the county's compensation plan and make recommendations for modifications. My review of the plan involves consideration of maintaining a competitive compensation structure while being mindful of what our budget can sustain. Though I believe our salaries need to be raised to be more competitive with comparable positions in both the public and private sector, our budget cannot withstand that at this time. Therefore, uh, this proposed compensation plan includes no changes. I recommend your approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three compensation plan as presented.
Motion? Second? Yes, second. Questions?
I have a question. You know, big rate, so it's not changing. It does, it does not improve the two percent.
That's a cost of living, so that doesn't change our faith.
Change, big.
That's a cost of living, just obviously.
Any other questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, it is approved.
Uh, item F, we've received, uh, application for permits for fireworks from the, for the town of Tarver at fireworks display. Um, I recommend that you authorize the fire marshal to issue the required permit as, as requested.
Motion to approve? Motion?
Okay. Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, it is approved.
Item G, uh, as you know, North Carolina General Statute does allow you to award a retired officer his or her service weapon. Specifically states that you may do so at a price determined by you as the governing body. Sheriff Atkinson has requested that consideration be given, given for retiring Sergeant Brady Abel. To show the county's appreciation for his exemplary service and to provide a memento to that service, I recommend that you approve the transfer of his service weapon at a price of one dollar upon the retirement of Sergeant Brady Abel.
Motion? So, move. Any questions? Questions? Here none, all in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? None, it is approved.
Item H, uh, you'll need to select a voting delegate for both the National Association of Counties Annual Conference in July as well as the North County Association of County Commissioners Conference in August. Commissioner Harris does plan to attend both conferences to represent the county. Therefore, I recommend that you approve or that you take action to, um, delegate or select Ms. Harris to be your voting delegate for both of those conferences.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, it is approved. Next.
Item I, uh, attached to your consideration is our water sewer department's capital improvement plan. Uh, this provides a way for, a way to plan for the phase build-out of the needed infrastructure in the county as well as capital purchases needed to maintain our existing system. It's planned list, desired projects, planned capital purchases, estimated costs, and the number of citizens potentially benefiting from the project. I recommend that, uh, the approval of the, uh, capital improvement plan for this year.
Motion, please. Second? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, it is approved. Next.
Item J, as you recall, we've replaced our phone system with what they call a voice over IP system, basically a system that makes calls over broadband connection. And so making the transition, we now have eleven analog phones and two hundred and ninety-five, um, other phones, um, that are no longer usable for us. And so I recommend that you, uh, vote to surplus, uh, these phones and then authorize us to, uh, place those on gut deals per se.
Motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, it is approved. Appointments, we have, Mr. Pantin Board, Mr. T J, uh, Mr. Brown is recommended with the service. Motion to approve? Next. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none. Mr. Brown is appointed. Edgecombe County Board, we have none at this time. Edgecombe County Board of Adjustment, we have, Juan Faucon, Michael Edison, Sister Calhoun. All three are recommended for appointment to our County Board of Adjustment. Is there a motion to approve? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, they are appointed. Edgecombe Community College Board of Trustees, who are the witnesses, who are the witnesses, is there a motion to reappoint? Second? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? She's there, appointed. Tom Sharp for the Pantin Board. Mr. Edward Taylor, who is directly at the real point and really concerned, is there a motion to reappoint? Next. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, they're here, appointed. Alpha Beach List and releases for review and approval of the services we have.
I'm, uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? If not, is there a motion to approve? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, they are approved. Approved and due contract, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have four contracts for you tonight. One contract is with, uh, solid waste department. This is for tipping fees, which includes transporting, uh, municipal solid waste to the regional landfill. Um, you also have three contracts for legal services for the three different programs in the Department of Social Services, I recommend that you approve.
Motion to approve? Second? Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye. Aye. All opposed? Here none, they are approved. Department of Reports and Review, Water and Sewer Update, you've got them in your, in the pack. Any questions on the Water, Sewer Update, any monthly findings or something? Any questions from the board? Here none, Managed Report, Mr. Evans.
Um, at one point you have in your packet, uh, your monthly workforce development indicators report. Um, I would also like to invite Mr. Nairi Peters to come back to the podium and he's going to give you a quote of view of our community voice.
I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Evans, and once again, thanks in court. Yeah, so, uh, today I'm going to be talking about community voice and this is at the first time that I've come before you and spoke a little bit about, um, the initiative, but this time it will be different because my time here in Edgecombe County is actually ending at the end of this month. So it's sort of a recap of some of the work that we've done, the framework that we've built with me. So before really jumping into community voice, I think it's kind of important to, to, to explain how like jobs here. Um, and, and I put that picture there because that was kind of my phase. Uh, when I first heard about the initiative, the idea of wanting to, um, you know, increase our community engagement. You know, I am here in Edgecombe County through a program known as Lead for North Carolina. Um, and the way that program works is that they recruit you to join the program and then you interview with your host sites, and Edgecombe County was one of the host sites I interviewed with. And I, I knew that the work scope that was coming into would be, you know, working on trans, increasing transparency in, in community engagement, but it's a very broad, you know, assignment to be given. And there wasn't much of a framework community engagement in Edgecombe County prior, you know, besides social media or the traditional forms of communication, that is phone calls, emails. Um, so we wanted to come up with a program, and that is community voice. Now, what is community voice? A citizen outreach initiative designed to strengthen the county's external communication and increase our transparency while creating new opportunities for citizens. If the mouth was so, to get more detailed, some of our goals are, you know, creating new tools for exchanging information while improving our existing tools, making memorable improvements to our county functions and services based on citizen input, increasing citizen access to county services, increasing government transparency, increasing civic capacity, increasing equity across communication. Make sure that everyone has an opportunity to access the services that are across. Um, so just getting over to some of those projects. You know, one of the biggest ones was the Citizen Academy, Edgecombe one oh one. That is, was an opportunity to really take citizens behind the scenes to show them, you know, what our county departments do and some of the thought process that goes into administering those services. Um, if you see on screen, some of the photos we have are from our different sessions. Um, we have Mr. Kaiser, um, presenting at our session on public works. Ms. Etheridge, the health director, presenting on our, at our session on human, our health, human services. And, uh, Dr. Gray, uh, while he's talking about, um, some of the corporate office, so it wasn't just department supervisors, it was also, um, you know, really, uh, you know, members of the community who, uh, hold that, that weight in the sense, you know, high, high profile members of the community. Also, we have, um, in the middle, you see the photograph from us inside of the mobile menu that the, um, emergency services department uses. And he was talking a bit about, uh, how it was used during the fire at QBC. Um, so, you know, on the screen, it shows that the class started February twenty-second and ran through May seventeen. Some of the classes talked about government administration, helping human services, education, emergency services, public records, and public safety. And, you know, in the future, we'd like to have more sessions, you know, these, this isn't the perfect framework. These aren't, this isn't the perfect, uh, schedule or curriculum anyway, shape or form, but I think this really gives a solid foundation. Um, you know, just a few, um, comments that were given from some of the participants. And I found the academy instrumental, and every resident should attend. I hope all of the governments follow them. Um, and, you know, I think, um, it's important to mention that a big, big part of what made the Citizen Academy work, were the presenters, the department supervisors. Their passion for the work that they do was, was conveyed in every single one of our sessions. And I think that, um, made it, um, a lot easier for citizens to connect with them and also to, uh, learn from them about how they can access these services better. Um, so another, um, project was a citizen feedback forum, and I spoke to you guys about that before. And this was really important as a part of community voice because it allowed us to gauge our progress and also the candid feedback from our citizens. Um, just kind of the layout of how to use it, it's available on the county website and the residents, and how do I tell? They can also access it directly. Um, but it's pretty easy, just first choose a relevant department, make sure you just say county manager. Second's like type of feedback, you know, just complaints, service requests, compliments, suggestions, or other. Three, you need your feedback in the blank box and choose what you wish to remain anonymous. If you ask the home, the sensitive purpose supervisor, uh, however do we know, follow up. And if you know, fill out your contact information, how you wish to be contacted. Uh, so some of the other projects, and you may have come across these on our social media or YouTube, um, some of our YouTube series. Uh, I know some of the commissioners were part of our COVID nineteen, why I got shot videos. Um, and these really were designed to provide citizens the behind-the-scenes book at the county government and to, to, to connect to the lives of their local officials, you know, hearing a little bit about their struggles or a journey during the pandemic. Um, also, Let's Talk Edgecombe was a podcast hosted by county manager and I. And the purpose of the podcast was to, you know, provide a fun, relaxed format and, um, you know. Another thing that we tried was, you know, social media campaigns. Uh, for example, during April, it was National County Government Month. We really tried to, uh, uh, ramp up our social media posts to really get people on, uh, you know, more aware about, you know, different services that the county government offered, really honestly perfectly aligned with community voice. But that along with just other frequent posts, uh, were used to, you know, engage our citizens to make them more aware of, you know, things going on here in the county. So some of the results, you know, there are now a hundred and thirty-plus minutes of information coming out, you know, across our different platforms, you know, podcasts, um, videos, et cetera. You know, we've had over a hundred submissions of citizen feedback form, most of which have been anonymous. So there hasn't really been, uh, there couldn't have been that same level of follow-up. But those that we do know who, um, submit them, they have been mitigated to some degree. So, and, you know, a hundred may not seem like a huge number, but having citizen feedback form not been included, those folks may never have had an opportunity to make those, uh, commentary. And a hundred fifty percent increase in face with agents, which I think, uh, you know, correlates to our, you know, increase in our frequency in posts. So I always like to end presentations with this question, what's nice? I mean, where do you go with community voice or just, you know, pushing community engagement here in Edgecombe County? Um, I think really, um, just be creative, um, to be not afraid to, you know, fall for it, um, to try things that don't work, you know, we did that several times, you know, things that we tried once and, well, okay, that didn't really work out to what we thought it was, so we, you know, moved on to something else. I think, um, that's really a big part of a project like this, also listening to the community, hearing about what they need, um, you know, the land. That's really a big, big part of it, is making sure that you're addressing, you know, the public's needs. And just, like I said, um, building on top of the framework that are we doing, such as the Citizen Academy. Ms. Harris asked about whenever we're going to have our next session, and I hope that it will be in fall. Um, that curriculum and the framework has been given, um, to Mr. Evans and, um, Ms. Bass, so hopefully they'll, you know, pick that up in the future. Um, but yeah, I think really just building on what we've had. But yeah, I think really just building on what we've had, I will be vulnerable last year. And last, and I'll at least thank you, um, you know, thank you to the board, um, thank you to the public, thank you to the, the department supervisors, thank you to the county executives for really, um, giving the agency to work on such a project. You know, it's been really a privilege, uh, to, to really come in and, uh, have opportunities to start with this guy. You know, and, and the trust that's been given to me has, has been such an honor, so I, I really just want to leave you guys with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, thank you, listen, thank you, and to kind of ensure that, uh, we do have that, uh, makes, um, need to, uh, um, Mr. You give them the direct, in my dispo.
Yes, okay.
On the phone, okay. And we want to make sure that we have, uh, the continuation of the project. Thank you for your service, uh, thank you for doing excellent job, well, okay. And you've done excellent job with the presentation. Just thank you for what you've done for the county, and feel good about it, and you will continue that work.
Excellent.
You have a thank you for your, it was nice for you.
What's next for me? Okay, so actually, um, I'm going to be moving to Charlotte. I've just recently, um, accepted the offer as communications and marketing coordinator, the CRBA. And I think, um, that's the Charlotte Regional Visitors Authority. And, um, what's awesome is I think that the work that I've done here, the portfolio that, well, built here in National County has really brought large influence on, in at least my opinion, on me getting into the position, so that's the word.
Good luck. Thank you, sir. Next.
Uh, that's it for, uh, reports?
Commissions, yes, sir.
I just got a question, so, ninety-three minutes.
Is there any, up, uh, bridge, move forward, up, failed, uh, revisit, you know, how long, you have to, most, they, the last I've heard, they have, we've missed that, but I haven't gotten an update in the C G standard, I can follow.
Oh, you do.
Yeah, they did, they had, this was a fee, and they still did not receive it.
And we've got a thirty day boss, so this is, uh, the, it's just, uh.
They had to have a full minute, and it wasn't just one D, they had to gather it, they had a time.
It's cute.
Yeah, they don't work.
Were there any other commissions? Here none, attorney? At this time, ladies and gentlemen, what is scheduled, what flow session, what economic development, and curse that matter? Is there motion to approve, they said? Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting side aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here none. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming, thank you for the presentation.